Hold to order, clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Here.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parzak?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Cape County Herald on January 6th, 2018. Will everyone please rise to salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When we were going through the different things coming up in the next several weeks to start our tourist season, one of the things that I neglected to mention or we neglected to mention is the Garden Club Annual Tour of Homes and Gardens, June 2nd, 12:30 p.m. to 4 o'clock p.m. And we do have Joan Petrowski here, if anybody's interested in purchasing tickets. And just so you know, 100% of the proceeds of the house tour goes towards beautifying Stone Harbor. And the urns you see, the hanging baskets and so on and so forth come from the proceeds from the house tour. So I apologize that we neglected to mention that during our tourism part. Okay, so first thing on our agenda is the South Jersey Gas hardship application.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. My name is Lauren Hurt. I'm supervisor of public affairs with South Jersey Gas. I have with me today Pedro Cologne. He is manager of our construction. And Pedro will go over our request to open up a total of five openings between Second and 82nd and Third and 82nd. These roads are, this road is currently under moratorium. However, as part of our project to enhance our infrastructure throughout Stone Harbor, we're asking to open up these areas and subsequently pave them in accordance with borough standards. But I'll let Pedro explain. Thank you.
All right, thank you for having me. As we requested, the areas that are going to be impacted are on Second Avenue and Third Avenue at 82nd Street. 82nd Street was recently paved not too long ago from the bay to the beach. And so with that being said, our infrastructure is going to cross the area there on Second Avenue and a little section on Third. So what we were proposing to the municipality was, since we're going to be milling and paving from 81st to 82nd, we were proposing to open up 82nd Street there and put our line across, come across to 83rd and have a continuous pave all the way down instead of us having to piecemeal it. Stop this year, come back after the moratorium is up and then just put that little piece in together. So that's what our proposal was for that area. On Third Avenue, 82nd Street is a one-way feed. What I mean by a one-way feed is that it's being fed from Third up to Second Street. So we have to jump over or tie over that infrastructure on 82nd Street onto the main that is on Third Avenue. So for us to do that, we have to open up that area and transfer it over without affecting those customers on 82nd Street. So we would have to open up about a 14-foot area and jump it over, tie it over. It would be one continuous opening. And when we come back to pave Third Avenue, it will also be a continuous pave. And so once we get done with our infrastructure replacement, you won't even know we were there. So that was our proposal.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
The 14 feet, is that just going to be a patch at this particular time?
Yes.
And when do you plan on coming back and paving all of that part of Third Avenue?
We are projected to pave those areas as well as the other areas in the fall as we did the first phase of our replacement program.
So they'll have patches throughout the summer, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
And let me just go back on this. Through Public Works, numerous times, we have asked South Jersey Gas to work with us. And when you're planning on something like this, to make sure that you contact our administrator and our Public Works Director so that if we're doing infrastructure under the street, that we could all do this at the same time. Apparently, this wasn't done in this case, so here we go again, opening up a street that's under moratorium. We are trying as a body, and I don't want to speak for my other council people here, but we're trying not to open up the streets after we've put a moratorium on them, after everything has been done with the infrastructure under the town. So if you can realize from our standpoint, it's very upsetting. First of all, it's upsetting to see the numerous patches in town. This is probably, only my opinion, the worst we've ever seen it in our town.
It's not just your opinion, I agree with that completely. The town looks horrible.
And it looks, and we're not used to this. I'm sorry, we're not used to this.
And are you aware that in our new ordinance, that you cannot just half-pave? It's an infrared paving and you've got to do the entire street. It's not going to be a patchwork when you're finished.
In the, in the, in the project that we have right now, the permit requirements were for us to do half-width down the road. So, so I say half-width is on, on Second Avenue, it would be the whole entire side of that street.
You can't do the whole side, you've got to do the street. Wherever you open, you have to make it all look like it was.
Talking Second Avenue.
We have an island in between.
You're talking Second Avenue.
Yeah, because you have an island there. Now, all the other areas where you see us working on one side of the road, we will be only paving one side of the road as we did the first phase when we were completed.
But that's really not acceptable for us now.
That's not pretty. There is a difference when it's an emergency opening.
Yep, this permit was approved prior to this new ordinance that you got.
Oh.
Yeah.
Too bad.
Okay.
This new ordinance does not affect that previous permit that we had.
Which is what you're, the permit you're talking about is the paving part of it. So what yours, no?
What, what, what they're asking for now is under the existing ordinance. So they would have to comply with our existing ordinance, which would be...
Because this, this varies from that initial permit that the, was under the old ordinance.
Yeah, well, it's a different area.
Well, the area that I'm impacting now, under the moratorium, that would be affected by what Mrs. Kramer is bringing out.
Okay.
We would pave that area there entirely.
This is on Second Avenue?
Yes, on Second Avenue.
So you're going to redo the bike lane and you're going to go from this island to the curb?
Everything from the island.
And then paint the, the bike path in there.
I have a map here, can I?
I know the, I know the bike path is there.
Yeah, we know the bike path.
I think we have that.
So the whole side would be paved. I'm going to call that the, the west side of the road. So we're going to consistently pave that west side of the road. Because the, the east side of the road is the beach, the beach side of the road.
Oh, okay, you're separating Second Avenue, east and west.
But, but I need you to answer Mrs. Rich's question. You're going to put back the bike lane.
Whatever is in that area that we've impacted, we will restore. We will also put back the striping. We will also put back any foul locations that are there. We will make sure we go around them, make sure they're visible as well.
But that's going to be the fall.
Now, if we don't grant this, what is your option?
Well, if you don't grant this, like I said earlier, we would just have to stop where we are. And once the moratorium is up, we'll have to come back. And then you won't have a consistent pave where, you know, it'll be seamless. We'll have to just come back, open up that area, put that piece in, and then we'll pave that little area. So it won't look as consistent and as seamless.
Jill, have we had any other emergency openings granted to South Jersey Gas?
I think this is the first one that you're applying for, correct?
Mm-hmm. So that we could look at what they really accomplished.
This is the first one they're, they're requesting.
How?
The, the engineer couldn't make it tonight, but he, he did, we discussed it and we actually met at the intersection. And the recommendation was that if you are so inclined to approve it, we just wanted to make it clear that it would be from the curb line all the way through that island, so the entire intersection. Because I'm not sure on your photo here, it looks like it's stopping. And we want to just make sure that it's going all the way to the curb line. Is that the same one?
It's easier to point up there.
So we have to cross this way here. And we would just pave from this island. It would just be a continuous pave all the way across.
Right, so you're opening up here. So we want to make sure...
Does anyone know when the moratorium expires on?
We want to make sure this is...
That was the question.
Grant, when does that moratorium expire?
What you see is a straight line this way. Okay.
2022.
And the final product would be subject to our engineer's review and approval and acceptance, correct?
We submitted our recommendation to him and he has it in hand of what we were going to do, yes.
But he would do an inspection of the final product?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And this, this encompasses anything that you want to do so that if we grant this, like the moratorium is up 2022, you're not going to come back in 2020 and say, oh, we have to do something else again?
Not in that area. All this infrastructure from 82nd all the way up to where we are right now will be completely replaced.
Where are you right now?
We are up to, what's the street right here, the...
95th, 96th?
95th, yes. Yeah, everything is, has been replaced in this entire area. We finished the first phase last year and we paved that area. And now we're finishing up this area here. The only hiccup was this little area here, but we wanted to ask permission before we opened up the road. We didn't want to go in and open up a road without permission.
Let me, let me try to clarify this. You keep saying you paved it, all I see is patches. So I don't see paving.
The first phase, the first phase.
And the second phase you're telling me is October?
The, or the fall. The second phase is this one that we're working in now, from 95th all the way down to 82nd, which is going to be paved in the fall, yes. Now, if, if you, if you guys grant us to work in the summer, we'll pave it in the summer.
No, you're not working it.
Yeah.
So then your Phase 2 will be completed in the fall?
Yes, and we'll be completely out of here and, you know, we'll have some small projects out of these areas that we'll be applying for in the summer.
And you can't wait to the fall to do this?
This area here?
Mm-hmm.
Well, right now, we, our focus was to retire the main. It's only going to take us three days to do this, to open up this area, get this done, and we could retire the old infrastructure. We don't have to worry about any leaks on our old infrastructure, any issues that we may be having it, with it. And all of our infrastructure will be replaced with plastic pipe and all of our customers will be transferred over to the new main and new plastic pipe. So we won't have any potential issues during the summertime in these areas.
I thought we have a, I don't think we have a problem with progress. We don't have a problem with progress. We have a problem with opening the road and seeing those small patches. And I know you're going to, you said you're going to do a full scan on this one, but what about all the other ones that you've already done that are horrible?
Well, then I don't know if that's for today's discussion.
It's probably not.
Has everybody within 200 feet, they need to be notified?
They were.
Yes.
And they already have been notified?
Yes.
My understanding was we already agreed to this whole program, that, that we wanted South Jersey Gas to do this, do it as efficiently as possible.
The entire upgrade of the infrastructure as it started two years ago?
And be done with it.
This is Phase 2.
They're not doing it because, for any other reason other than our safety, so...
We didn't know there was a whole street with a moratorium.
Right, and I guess they didn't know either, which is why they're here for their hardship.
They didn't know that they were going to, they had a street.
Right.
Right.
But what they're also saying makes sense too. So if they're already coming and they can continue this in three days and we'll get a seamless pave from, continuous seamless pave in the fall rather than a pave, then they come back and do the work and then another pave, well, it just makes sense to do it now.
I think the problem, and Mrs. Kramer mentioned this, for years...
Nobody likes the passage.
For years, we tried to work with South Jersey Gas. And when we had a road program, our Public Works Director would contact you and tell you we're doing our infrastructure and you couldn't be bothered to join with us. And then a year or two down the lane, then after the road was done, then you wanted to do some of your work. And I think that's why there is what you might foresee, maybe even I'll go so far as to say animosity, about this whole program because now you're under the gun because you've been ordered to make these corrections and adjustments. But you never wanted to work with us before. So maybe that whole attitude can change.
Well, I don't know if these people before us are the, you know, are the proper ones to...
I wanted to speak to that.
Shoot the messenger.
I have been in this role, I handle government affairs for South Jersey Gas. I've been in this role just a little over a year. So the people who were in this position before me, I don't want to speak ill of them. However, since I have come into this position, I've worked very hard with construction as well as our design department and our engineering departments to ensure that when we receive that notification, I send out a request letter twice a year to each municipality asking for the road program, what roads you're going to be working on. And with that information, we have a whole database of the updates from each of our 117 municipalities. And we send that over to our planning department so they can ensure that ahead of whatever work the municipality is doing, we're in there, if it's part of our, you know, infrastructure that needs to be replaced. So we are getting better at it. I do apologize for, you know...
You can't apologize for somebody before you. And I was not being rough or rude, I hope.
I understand.
I didn't mean that that way, but I sat in that department in utilities for almost eight years.
It's frustrating.
And it's frustrating.
I do.
It really is frustrating. And if you've made those changes, that's good.
And I do acknowledge that you have your hand up. You can come to the podium during public comment, okay? So, Mr. Solicitor, at this point, what do I need, a motion to approve their application? Does anybody have any more questions they want to ask of South Jersey Gas?
So, so she wants, I, I, let's allow the member of the audience to be heard because by the time the motion is approved, it'll be a fait accompli.
What was the answer when I asked if they could wait till the fall? I understood the whole, the whole process of what you need to do, but waiting till September would mean possibly a gas leak?
It would mean that we would not complete our project during our project program year. And then also, we would have old infrastructure in place with new infrastructure in place and with potential leaks in, in the summertime and having to open up roads when tourism is at its high.
Okay. Just please state your name and address for the record.
Mary Hayden, 8207 Second Avenue. I received this letter from South Jersey Gas. However, it doesn't specify when this work will be done. So I think that's my biggest concern, considering that I rent that home and starting next Saturday, it's rented through the summer. So, I mean, I would hate for people to be paying a large amount of...
You can speak to the date?
It's only going to be three days.
So if the approval is granted today, I could have somebody in there, hopefully weather pending tomorrow, Thursday, to start this work and have it completed by next week.
And in three days, he said?
Three days.
If it's not pouring rain.
Right, I mean, that's best-case scenario. What if something unseen comes up, like what if?
By Memorial Day, you mean?
Yeah.
Right, I'm like by Labor Day, I'm like, wow!
That's not good.
Right, okay.
That was generous.
But it's, it's not a long-term project.
Memorial Day for the record.
You're talking a three-day project.
They said three days.
It wasn't stated on here when and how long, so... I didn't put a date just because I didn't know. Right, but how, even how long, you know, I, I don't want, that's my only concern. I apologize. And that's why I drove here today, so, okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak to this application? Seeing none, okay, then what I'll do now is entertain a motion to grant the hardship application for South Jersey Gas.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted, application granted. Do we have any communications?
No, Mayor, we don't.
May I have a motion concerning the minutes?
Madam Mayor, since all members of council have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the work session and the meeting of April 17th, 2018, and the work session and meeting of May 1st, 2018, if there are no additions or corrections, I move we dispense with the reading of the minutes and that they be approved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We'll now have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. Ordinance 1521.
Madam Mayor, I offer that ordinance 1521 be taken up on first reading and...
Second.
Yeah, there's a modification to the language.
I'll read the modification and pertinent part. All repairs to the water service line from the meter pit, including the meter pit equipment, to the water main, where negligence is not a factor, shall be the responsibility of the borough.
Okay, and that appears in the section entitled Owner's Responsibility for Water Services 542-7. So that, you would be voting with that amendment?
Mine doesn't say that.
For first reading?
That's why it's being amended, it doesn't say it.
Oh, he's reading what is not in here.
He's reading the proposed language.
The proposed language.
What we decided and you, or you...
Exactly.
Let us to decide in.
Originally, the curb was referenced as a, as a point of reference where our responsibility took over. This includes the meter pit all the way to the water main.
Right.
Including the meter pit equipment.
So the curb is taken out?
Curb is taken out and is replaced with meter pit, including the meter pit equipment.
And I'll second it as amended.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1521 on first reading?
Ordinance amending Chapter 542, Water and Sewers of the revised general ordinance as the borough, Stone Harbor, 2005.
Madam Mayor, I offer that ordinance 1521 be passed on first reading, published according to law, and that it be taken up on second, third, and final reading and adoption at a meeting of mayor and council to be held on the 19th day of June 2018.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
I have a question, I couldn't get it in before. Does this new ordinance change include this turnoff charge of $2.50?
Yes.
Permanently?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-95.
I offer Resolution 2018-S-95 for adoption.
Second.
This is an overcharge for a tent permit. It should have only been $100, and the person was charged $275.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-96.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2018 S-96 for adoption.
Second.
This is our resolution that we do each year, allowing and designating the times and the places where dogs can walk on the beach during the summer season.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-97.
Mayor and council, I offer Resolution 2018-S-97 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution implements the compensation package for the lifeguards that we discussed in the working group meeting earlier.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-98.
I'd like to offer 2018 S-98 for adoption.
Second.
This is for the designated bathing beaches with the, down on the, next to the last paragraph that we talked about earlier, taking the 105th Street out of the rafting beach, but it's all in there in black and white.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-99.
Mayor and council, I offer Resolution 2018-S-99 for adoption.
Second.
This, this resolution just reissues a contract to Vipley Services for our automatic beach tag, or I should say our electronic beach tag sales.
Discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-100.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018-S-100 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution authorizes an agreement with Avalon Borough for emergency water interconnection, should the need arise.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-101.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018 S-101 for adoption.
Second.
This is for, to support fiber, fiber dysplasia ossificence, which is a skeleton disease. And we have been asked to make the community aware of this and urge the medical community to continue researching for treatment and cure. It's a rare genetic disorder.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-102.
I offer Resolution 2018 S-102 for adoption.
Second.
This is another refund in the amount of $830 to Allison Cornell for her children at sports camps, and her, her plans have changed, so she is due the refund.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-103.
Madam Mayor, I offer Resolution 2018-S-103 for adoption.
Second.
This resolution authorizes the borough to rescind the emergency repair charges associated with the following utilities accounts, 85970, 12350, 12860, 16880, 17420, 20170, 20250, and 20880.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 S-104.
I'd like to offer 2018 S-104 for adoption.
Second.
This is authorizing for the mayor to sign the agreement for the wetlands for their programs on the beach, for, I would guess this is going to be 2018, for it's a one-year.
Correct. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
And I need Resolution 2018 S-105, which is the resolution that's going to authorize gov deals to, for us to put the beach, what do they call it again, lifeguard stands on gov deals. It's been added. So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Okay.
Mrs. Gallagher?